All right, we'll call this meeting to order. June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, five P. M. And if we could. Say it right.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for granting us every moment of today for the gift of life, health, and endless love. You are our strength and hope every day, even in the toughest times. You are always with us, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, sir. Okay, can we roll call votes, please?
Michael Belizia?
Here.
Vincent Cutterford? Joseph Seibert?
Here.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Here.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Norman Ritchie?
Here.
Paul Hadzick?
Here.
Okay, one action. All right, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the May twenty-ninth meeting, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second it.
It's been made by, uh, motions been made by Councilman Ritchie and Councilwoman DeAndrea, we second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, they're approved. And we all have a chance to look at the, uh, treasurer's report for May. Uh, we need a motion to, uh, approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion we, uh, accept the treasurer's report for May, two thousand and twenty-four.
Right here, second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Councilman, uh, Seibert, seconded by, uh, Councilman Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, treasurer's report is accepted. Next will be the approval of the bills for May of two thousand and twenty-four. We need a motion for the approval.
I have questions.
Okay.
Okay, June the sixth, under the police, Tri-Tech Software Systems. There's two billings for annual maintenance fee.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that that would have been under the. Yes.
There's one for two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and three cents, and there's one for five hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents. And they're both listed as annual maintenance fee.
Yeah.
The ones that's software.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. One software, annual maintenance, and then the other one is the annual maintenance fee. We'll have to pull, you know, the invoices to give you a more definitive answer.
Okay, the next one is still on June the sixth, under the water. Rafa Systems Incorporated, Internet eight hundred dollars.
Yes, the Rafter System is our SCADA system for the border.
I thought we had Reesline for that.
No, no, it's our SCADA system is the system that monitors our wells and our tanks.
Okay.
And, uh, that's, that's our, well, it says Internet, but it actually is software.
Yeah, okay. And the last one is from June thirteenth. There's, I believe, seven bills on June thirteenth, and they're listed under Card Services Center. I know we have a credit card system now.
Right.
But they're all listed under miscellaneous supplies, and it totals almost twenty-six hundred dollars. We have no idea where the stuff was bought or what it's for.
That's our credit card. Unlike before, it was, it was.
What I'm saying is we have no idea.
Right.
Where the purchases are or what the purchases were.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing we can do in that case is to break out credit card services, I guess, a little bit more finite, you know, for you.
That's all I have.
Were your questions answered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there are some, there are a few of them that are specific, but, yeah, where it hits miscellaneous supplies.
And.
We'll see if we can break them out a little bit more finite.
Did we have a motion on that yet? No.
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 Uh, so here, a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills from June.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by the Councilman Belizia and seconded by Councilman Seibert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, bills were approved. Next, any agenda, is any other items of concern? Any? Anybody have anything?
I got something real quick.
Go ahead.
Positive. I just want to thank everybody we had, I was burning hill climb a couple of weeks ago. And I want to thank council for all the help Harold knew your people, Lord you and your staff and their, uh, county commissioners for all their help. And, yeah, the Widdoway Town for being as generous and, uh, supportive of the event, so, thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have one, one item, and that's, uh, I want to introduce, uh, Mike Sfranco. He's the chairman of the Corbin County Board of Commissioners, and he came up to, uh, learn how we do things. I guess, no, I had talked to Batfield Claim, and, uh, um, he was very instrumental in having the Corbin County Mayor's Association. Well, it was an association, but we all got together and we exchanged thoughts, and it was really helpful, and he always set that up. But, uh, that's Mike Sfranco right there, first year as commissioner, and he's already chairman. Only because nobody wanted it. Don't print that. But, uh, glad you came up, Mike, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Okay. Let's move into the business end of it here. First on the agenda is a public hearing on blighted, blighted area designation. Harold, do you want to say anything about that? Or do you want to say?
That drafter to Jim.
I'll defer to whatever you like to do. You are discussing having a, an alerta ordinance to local intact, income tax, real estate assistance, where you would grant, um, assistance or, or, or make certain properties, declare them blighted so that they could be part of a program where they could have tax abatement. And so the first step in doing that is having a public hearing, and you, as borough council, have to designate what area of the borough you would like to determine to be deteriorated. You don't have, you can designate the entire borough, you do not need to designate the entire borough. If there's some portion of the borough that you think is most appropriate to designate as deteriorated, you may do so. Um, it gets completely up to you. Now, being that this is a public hearing, we did send this out to the taxing entities. We sent it out to the county commissioners and the school district and the planning commissions. I don't know if we've received any letters of comment.
Just from the planning commission.
From the planning commissioner, but I think their only comment was the ordinance seems fine. But we sent a draft ordinance, we said it was only draft, um, and they had no objections to it. But, and I would say if anybody, purpose of a public hearing is if anyone has any comments regarding the designation of blighted area, now is your opportunity to share them with borough council so they can make a determination as to what area they will determine to be blighted.
I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
So we don't have to come back and revisit it again? We can actually declare, uh, that the whole town is blighted, so.
Well, you, you may come back and revisit it if you like it, like to.
But what if we just do the whole town and then we pick as we go if there is blighted?
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, you have to, you can pick, let's say you pick the whole town.
Right.
Or instead you just pick Spring Street. So let's do it this way, if you determine the whole town, anybody within the town has the right to make an application to have tax abatement for their property.
Okay, so Spring Street sounds good.
Oh, Spring Street sounds good, but you may, as I'm saying, you may want to say, well, you know, Spring Street's not enough, Wilbur Street or Carbon Street or whatever you want to do. So I'm saying you, you are not tied to, um, one specific area. And if you, and, and the other part of this is, like any ordinance, you can always amend it later. Now, you have to do that by new ordinance, but let's say you designate today Spring Street specifically, the Schwab School, because that's what's generating all this. If sometime later the, someone else comes in and says, really, we have some other area of town really needs development, it could use a shot in the arm and tax abatement with the assistance, this council or whatever future council could make the determination, all right, we're going to open it up. We'll re-advertise, have another, another public hearing, and make a determination that, that other portion of town as well. So again, the purpose of this is for anybody to offer comment, and at the end of this, if council wishes to make a determination as to which area would be considered blighted for purposes of this ordinance, they may do so.
Okay, I answered my question.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions on it? Go ahead.
Who, who would, like, determine if it would blighted?
You would.
You would.
You would.
Yeah, but I mean, like, or zoning or the, or, you know, who would determine that that is actually a blighted thing?
No, Jeff, the answer is you, you, borough council would. Borough council is going to make that determination, I think they are, is going to make that determination most likely tonight, but you don't have to make it tonight, you can make it later. But it's council's determination, and you could say, we think that we're going to designate Spring Street extending to whatever as the blighted area. That's you have made that determination. It doesn't say every property on Spring Street's blighted, I'm sure it's not, but you have designated as the blighted area.
So if someone would say, you know, you know, I want to improve this, but, you know, I want to apply for the abatement, do they have to come to, like, the council, like, a hearing or something?
There will then be a process, okay? If, let's, first of all, if you adopt this, say tonight that you're going to designate there's a blighted area, that's fine. You're not done, because you have not yet adopted an ordinance. So step two would be motion to adopt an ordinance. And I'll, let's go through step one first, because I'm going to suggest you send it to the people who are looking to buy the Schwab School to make sure that ordinance is appropriate for them. So in any case, but step two would then be adopt the ordinance. Now, let's say you've adopted the ordinance. Now, someone who wishes to obtain tax abatement would make an application to the borough. You'd have forms, and they'd say, okay, I'm the owner of the Schwab School, and I want to make the application for tax abatement. And so long as it meets the criteria of the ordinance, they're entitled to the tax abatement.
Is there a chance that somebody could take advantage of it and not, like, do the, fix up their property then?
Yes, there's a chance, however, you don't lose anything. Let's say they come in and say, we want to qualify for this. Great, you qualify, and then they don't fix up their property. We don't lose anything. The idea of this is any improvements they make are going to be exempt from taxes for a period of ten years. They don't make the improvements, there's no exemption.
So only improvements would be.
Only improvements, right. And that's where the law is written, it's not the entire property, it's any improvements that are made to that property.
Because I just don't want to see people, you know, apply and everything and then kind of rip the borough off, you know, that's what I'm just trying to watch for.
The way the statute is written, uh, we, we shouldn't be ripped off. I can't tell you, nothing will ever happen, but again, I'm saying, the way it's written, it's not, again, it's not for the current property, it's for the improvements to the property. And you can look at some properties and look and say, okay, what's their value now? Now, there's a tax assessed value, and I don't know if that's what you go by, but, again, it would only be for improvements.
Section three, pretty much outline two.
So for now, we're, we're going to try hopefully to at least designate the Schwab School. So we get that rolling or get it moving in the right direction? Now, do we need a motion to declare that?
You'd need a motion to designate Spring Street specifically, including the Schwab School, as a blighted area.
Okay.
Again, unless, unless someone wants to add anything else, but that's what, that's what you're talking about.
We make different motions, like have that and have another area.
Well, you could, if, if you wish to, yes, I'd, I'd accept that.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we, uh, the Schwab School, that, that part of Spring Street, there from the school to the corner, we designate that as a blighted area.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and you seconded it, uh, that the Schwab School, from the Schwab School to the corner would be designated a blighted area. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, with that said, now we have to authorize the solicitor, uh, to publish the letter ordinance?
Well, and, and I'm saying, you can certainly authorize me to do that. My recommendation is we don't publish it yet, number one, I have to make that change to it. But I would prefer that we send it to the company that's looking to buy the Schwab School. Because I, what I don't want to do is have you guys incur the expense of advertising this and then, then say it's not, it's not okay. So, again, there's no hurry, I don't think there's.
Okay.
And, and, and please pause, let's leave it at that, because you have to understand that the per, the people who are doing this, yes, they want tax abatement from the borough, but they're going to want to also have tax abatement from the school and from the county.
Right.
I don't know what, you know, it, because the school's a big one. If they don't get it from the school, I'm sure the project dies. So, as I'm saying, I don't think there's any urgency enough of us doing it. We can certainly wait to the July meeting, send it to them, wait to the July meeting, and if the July meeting, they've come back and say that's appropriate, we can advertise it at that point.
So we're going to table the authorization?
I would table the authorization, just authorize sending it to the buyer, buyers of the Schwab School.
Could I, could I table that without a motion?
You can do, yeah, you can just table.
Okay. So anybody object to me tabling number two? And then, like he said?
Yeah.
Like, uh.
Send it over, yep.
Okay. Any other questions on it? So we move to number three, and that's discussion, uh, copier replacement. Harold, you should know more about that than I do.
The, um, our office copier that we have in our main office is really a vital piece of our operation here as it does the circulars that we send out yearly, or monthly with the bills, and also, uh, a large majority of scanning and, uh, just plain office copying, it's really the heart of a lot of our paperwork here. We've been informed that, that model is now considered obsolete, where, where you used to pay per copy for color and for black and white, per cent, so many, went toward the maintenance and also toward the toner. Uh, now they're telling us that that's not going to be the case, that they're now going to charge us for service work, and they're not guaranteeing they're going to get the parts. So, uh, again, as I had indicated in my narrative, we had looked at, uh, top copy for a comparable, uh, machine to what we have, and, uh, I had given you the, the flyer from, from the company in regards to its equipment. And with the purchase price of ten thousand nine forty, uh, as opposed to turnaround and doing a thirty-six month lease, whether it through the company or through our bank, uh, they pretty much came out to the same percentage, and we were looking at almost like a thousand dollars over the three-year period in interest. Where I would recommend if you're, you're okay with purchasing this, that we just divide it between the four, uh, departments and pay for it.
How old's your copier?
Huh?
How old is the current copier?
I'm worried, how long do you think we?
Older than dirt.
Geez, we had that a while over in the other office. So.
I'd say at least eight to ten.
I was just, I was going to say ten, but somewhere thereabouts.
It's been a long and healthy one.
Yes, it has.
So I'm waiting for the partners. So, was that the discussion?
I had also indicated in there about a large format scanner. If some of yous have seen the inventory, we have a blueprints, not only in the conference room, but also in the storage room, and we have boxes of them down in the ambulance, you know, room building down there. Um, and a lot of them are, are important to us, and we refer to them, you know, quite often, and it's, we even had, haven't had a chance to even get through everything. But, uh, what I'd like to look at is getting a large format printer, scanner, scan all our prints and have them electronically so that I can eliminate, you know, the paper and the proper storage and worrying about them deteriorating, uh, and then be able to print out whatever we necessarily need, you know, from the printer.
So, I have a question. I might understand that this, this one piece of equipment will do letter size all the way up to blueprint size, am I understanding that?
That's a good question. I know it will do large format posters, banners, you know, and things like that, but I do not, I don't know that it will do letter size. I'm not familiar with that.
I, I, I misunderstood, my apologies. I, I missed, I, I thought this was just for the regular, for printing this stuff.
Oh, no.
We're talking about two different machines.
We're two different machines.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So the, the copier.
That I talked about, that's been here for ten years, yes, it will do everything up to, uh, ledger.
And now you have another machine that you're talking about that can do blueprints, etc.
Blueprints, right. Scan blueprints, large format, and then, uh, scan them electronically, that we have all our blueprints stored electronically.
And is that.
Two different machines.
Is that like in here somewhere, or that's, you're just talking about it separately?
I'm talking about it separately. In my narrative, I also, I, the last paragraph, I'm also looking at a large format printer scanner.
Okay.
We would be able to handle the scanning ourselves without hiring somebody?
Yeah. Yeah. It's just a matter of putting it through the machine, you know, hit it on scan. Yeah, it's nothing.
You're talking one machine for scanning and printing?
Yes.
We're, we're going to buy, we're going to hope, do one at a time, or you're looking to?
Well, what I was looking to do, if you approve it, is buy the one that we need for the office, you know, immediately. Then later in the year, I'll purchase the other one as I see, you know.
Will that cost be divided by the department?
Yes, yep. Because the prints are from all departments, you know. The electric water sewer and our general, you know, streets and everything else.
Do we have the ability to decide on those units separately today?
Yeah.
So you're looking for a motion to buy the copier from Top Copy for ten thousand nine hundred and forty dollars?
Yes.
And we'll revisit the second?
We'll revisit the second one later in the year.
I did not understand that, and I have questions very specific to another unit.
The big one.
Familiarity with what's going on.
The large format?
Yes, sir, and I would like that there, there's been a real change in that industry, and I want to make sure that we're not.
Okay.
Painting ourselves into a corner.
Did we get several bid, uh, quotes or just?
Uh, no, actually, I just went with the dealer that was servicing, you know, the service area. Now, actually, we don't have to give bids because it's below the threshold.
Yeah, but I mean, do we just check out other places?
You know.
Like, there'd be a thousand dollars less or something, you know, it's all of that.
I think you're pretty much looking at a fair trade item.
Okay, so we need a motion for Harold to, uh, purchase the copier.
I'll make a motion to purchase the office copier.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Belizia, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Miller, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. The last thing on the business agenda is the approval of the items that are going to go on this bid, everybody should have had a copy of that.
I had, we couldn't get everything into you for the, the compute, for the laptop or the pad, iPad. So I set it on your desks, additional items that we got together. As, as long as the Versalock lock. And we'd like to say, we're, we're talking specifically at that basketball court, but all of the Versalock that we have available.
Right. Yeah, because there was four, four hundred and some there, and there's two skids behind Borough Garage. So there's a couple hundred.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to approve those items for sale.
I make a motion to.
Oh, go ahead.
I make a motion to, uh, advertise the items listed on this bid for sale.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Ritchie, seconded by Councilman Seibert. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Go to town with this, but now we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, we move to executive session.
Right here, second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, because now we're in the executive session, and you could, if you're going to let them just sit here, we'll be back there.
Yeah.
Let's go back again.
That way it is. It's actually- That would be the next.